Once again, ladies and gentlemen, thank you for joining us. And as I was saying, the yearly expenses so far are under budget by $247,000. And that is one reason why we are able to begin the building renovations that are now underway in the Orleans. And we will take them one by one as we continue to improve the values of the village by basically taking up a project that has been long overdue. But we felt that even though it is a big investment, we do need to definitely take that up. And we have the money fortunately because we've been saving the money up to this point. And with that, I think that's pretty much all I have to say about the budget so far. We do have our budget hearing coming up in December. So that's when we'll be able to tell you an exact figure of how much we'll be able to reduce the maintenance. The fact that we're doing the building renovations will mean that some of that money will go toward that. So the maintenance reduction will probably be relatively modest, but it's a balancing act. We don't want it to reduce it so much that we're not able to do a project that we think that for the majority of the owners and residents in this community is very important because we have six buildings. That's the majority of the units that have still not been renovated. So I think that it's a balanced approach that we're taking. And that's basically it. Sure.
You mentioned all about the expenses that we've saved for under budget. How about income? How are we doing with collecting maintenance fees and collecting uncollectible debts? How's the income doing?
I'm glad you asked that question because as you may have noticed from previous discussions if you've been watching the videos, we did have a big issue with our collections under the previous collection firm. Actually, that was Alliance, that we decided to terminate their contract because of the performance that they were essentially, we went from approximately $880,000 in delinquencies under the 90-day column to almost 1.5 million in the two years that Alliance was in charge. So a little more than two years. So we, that's the first step. We need to take the collections out from under Alliance and they are kind of fighting us a little bit. So we're still not there. We're getting close. They have received a termination letter. And once that happens, the collections, we are getting more aggressive with that for sure. And in fact, a bunch of letters went out. You may have heard that, yes, to a lot of unit owners. And so we are definitely getting aggressive with that.
Well, that doesn't really answer her question though. The budget isn't allowing for delinquencies. So when you say, "I'm $30,000 under budget," is the budget allowing for that or is it really kind of bad?
Let me let David take that a little bit more. Is he having more involvement with the budget?
Actually, your budget does allow my bad debts.
Could you talk into the mic?
Okay.
There is a line item in your budget that does allow for bad debts. Obviously, you don't want to have that. So we're going to try and get more aggressive. We just mailed out over 300 letters and I know some of you here received them. Okay? You know, and obviously, we've got to get more aggressive. What was putting a roadblock in our way was Alliance.
Okay.
So now that they've been terminated, hopefully, we'll get all those files back from them and proceed going forward.
Right, but at this point in time, is the income shortfall matching the income savings? Do we have a watch or we have $500,000 in the bank?
We don't have like an income shortfall, as you say. Like our collections have been consistent.
Okay.
We, yeah, we have, close to that.
Cool. John, I'm sorry, but my question really is on the budget we have per month, how much do you anticipate coming in from maintenance to pay monthly costs to data? Are we aligned with that? Are there people still making maintenance payments and how are we under or over in our budget for that?
Unfortunately, I can't give you that much detail because we, we just received the numbers for preliminary for what we're going to use to determine whether or not we can do a reduction in the maintenance. And it looks pretty good, but to go to that, that level of detail, come to our budget, you know, meeting and we'll be able to go into that to more detail.
Don't you have like for the month ending of August budget for maintenance, income, and what it should be budgeted for? I mean, you could certainly...
We're, we're under budget. Yes.
Okay.
Okay. Next item on the agenda is the manager's report.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. This is on. Now it's on. Okay. First of all, just want to let everybody know and remind you that next Tuesday is Election Day. All the equipment will be delivered on Monday. Okay? It's all set up with Broward County elections. So please, don't forget to vote. Exercise your right. Okay? I've got about three pages here of stuff that's been accomplished over the past month. I just want to touch on a number of items. One of them is the 40-year certification. The engineer who had performed the inspection on the three buildings a few months back and was hired to do the other seven have already done four buildings so far. So those have been inspected and still have three more to go. Armor protection is going to be replacing the alarm panel in the Zurich building which got hit by lightning about two weeks ago. Yeah, it's functional, but it needs to be replaced. We received a proposal from Beach Rama to replace the burned-out lights and gaskets and transformer in the outdoor pool. I'm hoping the board will vote to approve that expense. That's around $2,600. Maintenance has been doing a lot of repairs to pitch pans and scuppers. We've been working on the Nottingham roof, repairing some expansion joints, membrane. We've caulked some windows. Maintenance has been doing a lot of stuff. Now, we just started working in the Orleans building. As Doug had said, we're starting those renovations. The budget, we've been working on the budget and hopefully I'll have, I've already given the board a first draft and, you know, hopefully, we'll sit down and discuss the numbers. And that's pretty much it. Does the board have any questions?
You mentioned that we have to approve an item for Beach Rama?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yeah, that's in your package?
And could you explain again what that was for?
To replace a number of lights in the outdoor pool and a transformer. Also, the indoor pool, there's a few lights out. Total is $2,645.72.
Okay.
No, these are the pool lights.
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 They just burned down.
Yes, sir.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve the contract with Beach Rama for the replacement of the, it's a replacement of foam. What kind of lights?
They are 300-watt pool lights.
Okay, 300-watt pool lights at a price of $2,645.72.
Doug, do you second?
Yes.
Thank you.
Is that the only estimate we got?
They're your pool company. They do pretty much everything.
Does that include the hot tub, which is broken?
No, that'll be separate. Was, actually, did they show up? Thursday? Okay. They've been called, come out and fix the heater and stuff.
Excuse me, talking about the pool area, there are some tiles in the indoor pool near the jacuzzi that is very loose.
All right, let's discuss that after.
Does anyone wish to be recorded? No? Motion passed unanimously.
Motion passed?
Motion passed unanimously. Next item on the agenda is...
Wait, was there anything? Hey, was there anything else in Andrew's report to do it?
No, unless you had any other questions.
Oh, wait, yeah.
There was, Elwood wanted to make an announcement.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. For the past two and a half weeks, I had officials from La La Hill come over to the property late at night alone with my staff. So I've been going home between the hours of 2:00 to 3:00 in the morning every single night. Reason why is because we had the break-ins that have been taking place lately while I was gone. Now, apparently, within the past couple of days, we was able to capture two persons.
Really?
Yes. We was able to capture two persons. Knock on wood. So therefore, we're doing our best, okay? So far, I don't have any answers to figure out if the person lives on the property or if the person outside of the property. I don't have the answers yet, but the minute I do, I will let management, the board, and also the association know what's going on. Okay? But we did capture two persons. One then was riding his bicycle. When we noticed him, he started ticking off from the Heidenberg Building, went over by behind the board door, took his bike, threw it over the wall, jumped over the wall. La La Hill police catch him. Another guy was one behind the building, behind the Intermarket Building. He noticed that we saw him. He took off. He jumped into the lake, came out, ran out, jumped the wall, and they caught him again. All right? So therefore, we're doing the best that I can. So therefore, I want you guys to understand. If you guys see La La Hill police driving around late at night, just leave them alone. Let them do what they need to do. It's very, very, very important that you guys stay away from the police department because they are doing their thing. And I already know what's going on, so does the property manager, but we have to just let them do their job. Okay? And another thing too, for the past two weeks since I've been back, I noticed a lot of windows has been left wide open from residents on the first floor. So it's very important, talk to your neighbors. Make sure that the windows and the front door and also the patio doors are locked. Because when we driving around here late at night, you'll be surprised how many windows are open late at night. Okay? So that's the message the detective wanted me to pass to the association and I want to pass along to you guys. Thank you.
Okay, we're working on getting cameras?
Cameras. You have to speak to the board about that.
Are you working on getting cameras or that's a dead deal?
It's not a dead deal. We're, we're getting bids. Next item on the agenda is S1R appeal. David?
Okay. We had an application that was denied and the owner of that unit has filed an appeal. And the reason it was denied was the fact that the person didn't meet all the criteria that the association requires. The main reason basically was he did not provide a W-2 form. So in the owner's appeal, he explained why and he has asked for approval, a consideration, that this person be allowed to live there based on the fact that he would submit a W-2 at the end of January 2015.
That's a rental or sale?
Rental. So it's up to the board whether or not they want to consider that.
Any, any discussion from the board? So you're, they're asking for a conditional approval.
Conditional approval?
Based on whether or not, I mean, based on the tenant providing the W... Okay, so I'll, I'll make a motion to that effect for discussion. If there's any discussion on that board? I move it. Discuss.
I'm sorry. Can you say that again? I do hear you.
Any discussion on the board?
Second?
Okay. Oh, I, I second.
Discussion?
So we're done?
Yeah.
We're basically looking at two and a half months.
You gotta talk into the mic.
Okay. So basically, we're looking at two and a half months until we get a W-2. Okay, so I, I don't know. I, what does everybody think about?
What is the function of the W-2?
To, to re...
Well, they've shown, according, according to David, they, they...
That's part of the criteria that your documents require to approve someone to rent or purchase.
They didn't file a tax...
It's in the...
They didn't file a...
In lieu of the W-2, wouldn't a recent pay stub do the trick?
No, that's also requested in your documents.
And that has not been provided?
The only thing that wasn't provided was W-2.
So the pay stubs were provided?
That is correct.
And the pay stubs indicate sufficient?
That he makes sufficient.
Okay. So the W-2 is more like, like a technicality and the, and the deal was if he provides that within two and a half months under, under that provision?
He would be considered, yes. That's the condition.
Yeah. The pay stubs would indicate the salaries for a particular month or months. The W-2 would give you the salaries for the whole year.
Right.
So when you're trying to assess an applicant, you're looking for his annual salary.
My pay stubs have year-to-date on it, income?
Yeah, well, I think he picked up his, did he get his job late in the, part of the year or something? I think that was the issue. David, do you remember what the situation was?
David, he didn't provide...
It's not open to the board. It's not open to the board.
No, it's before.
Yeah.
But she's on the sales committee.
We said it open to the board.
He didn't provide a W-2 last year.
But they, what, the reason I think I would consider this favorably is that the risk, the financial risk is borne primarily by the owner. Because we are not, we are concerned when we, after, after we've passed the stage, it's the owner's obligation to pay the maintenance. So it is one of the many things we look at when we determine whether this person is going to make a strategic fit with the association. But it is not exclusively the only thing. So to, to deny somebody based only on that, the attorneys themselves have said, at least we have an opinion, a written opinion, indicating that it is not prudent to use that as the sole reason for denying an applicant. So based on that, I, I would agree with, with John's position that we give this particular applicant conditional acceptance pending his providing all the information that is required by our rules and regulations.
As long as you don't get into an eviction issue then?
Well, that's the landlord's problem because the only issue that we can see is if the person created a nuisance for the other people and not having a W-2 doesn't fit into that type of category. So, okay, thank you.
Does anyone wish to be recorded? No? Okay, motion passed unanimously. Next item on the agenda is H3F purchase. I move to approve.
Somebody has a second?
Yeah, a second.
I'm sorry, give me a second. Thank you.
Is there any, any discussion on the board?
We, we do have a surplus at the moment. And the way we calculate it is that the price of which this property is going, we exercise our right of first refusal. And the, there are two things we look at when we, when we intervene, is that we would like to keep the value of properties here up. So there was one case where the property was on sale for $16,000 and we immediately investigated it and we dealt with it appropriately. In this case, the, we could not deal with it in the same way. And it was a very good purchase and actually, we do have people already interested in it. So really, it is a, it is an opportunity for the...
Excuse me, interested in it as to...
Purchase, 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 yeah.
So the association's going to flip? Of course, well, that's cool. Just, which, which we just share. It's not an open discussion.
Oh, sorry. I was advised it's not an open discussion, so I, I have to speak directly to the board members.
No, no, to the audience.
Oh, to...
And the board members. It's just not a back and forth.
Okay, it's not a back and forth, so. Okay.
Any more discussion on the board? Does anyone in the audience now have any questions?
Can I have a question?
Go ahead.
I understand, now, this case, who bought that unit? Association bought it or individual bought it?
The association.
Association. No, the association purchased.
Okay. So far, I understand, if you take a look at, I mean, see, we have to obey the law, whatever regulation we tend it, we have to go by regulation. If you take a look at, I'm not pretty sure, association cannot buy any unit. That's amended last year. Is that why?
No, no, no. The association can purchase a unit.
Okay, then, out, okay. Then, any association or organization, is it, is it, is it able to buy a unit from this village?
No, corporation is not allowed to purchase a unit in international villages. However, however...
What, what corporation and association?
Well, because your documents specifically state that the excluding, it says excluding the association. The association can purchase units. They have the right of, they have the right of first refusal.
Well, if you have that exemption, yeah.
That's exactly how the documents were written.
All right, thank you.
What value can they purchase these units at?
Oh, was he directing that to me? I'm sorry. I was having a side discussion. Okay. Does anyone wish to be recorded? No on this item?
We've, we've finished our floor.
I believe so. Does anyone else have any questions? Other?
Your speech, please?
We, basically, for anyone who's interested, we have a unit for sale. It's H3F. If you're interested in purchasing the unit, you can talk to our manager, leave your contact information, and we will make the unit available for you to see and purchase. Please address any questions to our manager regarding that after the meeting if you are interested in looking at the unit.
I have a comment to address your, your question. We have the right of first refusal because if somebody is going to make a distressed sale, it brings down everybody's value because property values are based on comparable sales. If somebody sells their apartment for $5,000 because they just want to cut and run, the association has the right to come in, buy it for that $5,000 first so that we can take the time, sell it to a qualified buyer at a price that is fair market and not protecting everybody's property value.
Very well put. That's great.
Okay. Does anyone wish, anyone wish to be recorded? No? I'm going to vote no.
Doug, you're voting no? Any other no votes?
David, do you have a pen?
Do I? You are. All right. Any other no votes? Otherwise, well, in favor, 4-1.
Could David?
Doug voted no.
David?
Wouldn't it profit for me to ask the acting president as to...
We don't, we mean to discuss. We already voted.
Well, he wants it, he wants it. Just my only contention was with $40,000. If another...
There's no, there's no discussion after the vote. We don't discuss after the vote.
Discuss before the vote, not after the vote.
Okay, we can.
So motion passed 4-1.
Next item on the agenda is...
Excuse me, Doug, I'm sorry. You bypassed the sales and lease report.
Next item on the agenda is the sales and lease report.
You forgot. Good evening, everybody. I'm trying to make it really short and everybody's tired. I would like to start by thanking the committee members who are such a great help in assisting us review the applications and providing their time. Thank you so much, guys. So I'm going to start with my report. This is very brief compared to last times. We have from September 24th, we have the last board meeting on September 23rd. Okay? So from September 24th up until October 17th, which is the date that I closed my report, I have to give a week's time for the board to review the applications, okay? Up to, from September 24th to October, October 17th, we have 12 leases submitted. Out of those 12 leases submitted, there were five that were denied. And here is the report. In the other ways building, we have unit E1C. This is a one-bedroom. For nine, it was rented for one, from $925, it was approved. And the Brinnel Building, unit G3Y, this is a one-bedroom, rented for $895, approved. In Heidenberg Building, unit H2Q, one-bedroom, $950, approved. Unit H2U, one-bedroom, $900, it was denied. Interlaken, I1N, one-bedroom, $800, denied. Nottingham, N1B, one-bedroom, $900, approved. N2J, two-bedrooms, $1,250, denied. St. Maurice, S1J, one-bedroom, $900, denied. S1H, two-bedrooms, $1,100, approved. Yorkshire, 1F, one-bedroom, $900, denied. Y2D, one-bedroom, $800, approved. Zurich, Z3K, one-bedroom, $900, approved. Notice how their rentals are going up for the one-bedrooms, which is a good thing.
And is furnished or unfurnished?
The majority are unfurnished, which is a good thing. Okay, let's go to the rollovers. There were presented 10 rollover applications. The majority were approved. And here we are. Bordeaux, B2L, two-bedrooms, it was rented for $1,050. B2H, two-bedroom, $1,050. Otherwise, E2A, one-bedroom, $855. E2L, two-bedrooms, $100... E2L, two-bedrooms, 1,150. Grenole, Grenoble, G3D, one-bedroom, 725. G3G, one-bedroom, 830. Interlaken, I2N, one-bedroom, 800. Nottingham, N1D, one-bedroom, 800. Orleans, O2V...